I'm just here to learn.
He came to the wrong meeting. Ready? Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals for September nine, two thousand twenty-four. We've got three of our board members here tonight, so I think we can proceed and I will call the meeting to order and we have in front of us the the agenda for tonight and I'll look for a motion for approval of the agenda. Motion carries well. And an approved agenda. We also got minutes from our last July first meeting. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a peek at those, see if anybody's got any comments or corrections or.
Mr. Chair, I did have a minor correction. Inch five. Towards the bottom where is the motion under hearing number two. The language in the motion has the core factors, but just prior to that it has the language that says because of the following conditions. And so just think the word conditions, maybe just straight back because there weren't any conditions on the approval. It was just within that those four factors. So I would like to see the minutes correct, but just to innovate. Based on the following five things as opposed to conditions.
Think that makes sense? Yep. I agree with that. That's your only comment? Okay. Warren, do you have anything?
I don't. I'll make a motion to approve this.
You got a motion of support. All right. Motion for approval of the minutes as amended carries. All right. So on tonight's agenda, we've got, we've got two hearings. The first of which has two variances required. And I think the order of that may dictate actually if we do get through both, but but we have neither our administrator or township manager present tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and read and introduce the public hearings for us tonight. And the first one is a request by Robert J. Hastings for accessory building that is nine hundred square feet where two or two hundred and ninety-six point two square feet is permitted per section thirty-eight dash four ninety-one of the Park Township Code of Ordinances. And for an and for an accessory building with a rear yard setback of ten feet where twenty-five feet are required per section thirty-eight dash four ninety-one of the Park Township Board Board of Ordinances. Said lands and premises are located at fourteen, seven forty-one Vanessa Avenue. And it's located in the R three low density, single family residential district. If there is anyone here tonight to speak or introduce this hearing, welcome you to the podium. If you want to step up and say a few words, you're welcome to do that. If you could sign your name, please, and address and there is nothing up there?
No.
To sign.
Ink pen.
Okay. We'll get you. We'll get you something here. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
You can. You can. You can. You can start. We can get you some. You can get us a site.
Not Robert.
And you have the address of where we live. Robert is a mechanic by trade and he did have to retire due to medical disabilities. But he does like to still work on things at home. That being said, right now our garage is full of toolboxes and welders and all kinds of auto mechanic stuff.
And we just moved here to Holland down June twelfth.
And we thought we could get by.
Okay.
But yeah, we need. We need more space. And so that's why we're asking to go ahead and build this outbuilding. In addition, the setback of the twenty-five feet, we went out and measured if we did move that forward twenty-five feet from the back of the property, the front of that outbuilding, you could literally step off our back deck and go, you know, step right into the building. There's not much leeway. Also, in order for him to get a vehicle back there to work on it in the outbuilding, there's no one possible to get the vehicle to turn sharply into that outbuilding. And this is all for personal use. He did not work on.
I don't do side jobs or anything like that. I mean, I can't do that anymore. It says I like to keep care of all my stuff. I don't want it laying around the yard or out front. I got a big four-wheel drive truck that that's sitting out next to the house because we have nowhere to put that and camper. And usually that stuff's in in storage in a barn or somewhere. So I just like keep all my stuff under, you know, make the place look nice and tidy and.
Great. Yeah.
Question. You wait your question.
No, no questions yet.
Okay.
But we we may.
Okay.
So you can. You can have a seat, but I'm going to open up actually the public hearing for this at the moment to see if see if there's anyone. Anyone out there that wants to speak, speak about this?
Hi, I'm Dan.
Yeah.
I live at one four seven four two Value View Avenue. My backyard is their backyard. We join each other. Been there for about eight years. We got the notice in the mail. Wife and I, we don't have any issue for what they're asking for. They did show us where they would put it. I have no issue with that. So I just wanted to state that. Where my entire backyard is their backyard plus part of the next door neighbor's yard. So
Okay.
No issue from us.
Okay. Yeah. If you could sign in, please. That'd be great. Thanks, Dan. Understood.
Yeah, I just formally met them today. My wife's earlier. Just, yeah, they're moving in recently. So I can understand the need for storage stuff. I get the same issue as the camper, the bikes, the kayaks. Want to keep them indoors and
Sure.
to afford the acreage and big pole barns nowadays. It's just then we got lots of stuff, but yeah.
Yeah. No, under understood. Thanks, Dan. Okay. Any anyone else? I'll see anyone else. I'll close public hearing and open it up for board comments and discussion. So it's yeah, from what you know, everybody's had a chance to see it or read it, look at it. I mean, by all rights, you know, two hundred or just approaching three hundred square feet. I don't. I mean, we're three times what would be allowed per the ordinance as it's written. I just and thereby requiring us, I think, to kind of forcing us into the setback variance as well. If the size is, you know, what is, I I think dictating it.
That's my understanding as well that because the request is exceeding three hundred fifty square feet, then it changes the minimum rear setback to five feet to twenty-five. So it's the size of the building being requested. That's necessitating their request for a bit weird and varying. Very unusual to see a request for three times the allowed in size. Relatively smaller parcel. I did take a look at some of the other parcels, parcels that were matching the new application. Is also having accessory buildings and just would note for the record that those information I could find, all of those parcels were larger up to one acre, one one's one acre with no attached garage. So those types of characteristics wouldn't approve of a larger building. And it looks to me like the largest building accessory building. On those parcels that were referenced in the application was just over seven square feet. So the nine hundred is even substantially larger than what exists in the area.
I didn't see. Looking for the flat size. Hundred fifty by.
Just point three five acres.
Okay. Point three five. Yeah, that's what I wondered.
So just for comparison purposes, we have a two percent lot coverage allowance in the ordinance. So if we're to look at a lot that was point four acres, I don't know, three forty-eight one acre eighty-seven, we want this is getting larger than what would be allowed. Person three times the size. Struck me in looking at the area, I'm looking at the other properties that this would be really outlawing in terms of the size and configuration of their of an accessory building in the state of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I didn't. I was looking. It was just, it does seem, I was looking for that comparison to study as well along along either side of the road or in the neighborhood. I just, I can't find the context. Where it would be comparable to it, you know, I and we look at that a lot. There's neighboring situations that are in that proximity. We we can start to look favorable for, but I guess right now at this time, I I don't know, trying to meet the standards that we've got here for. And I'm, I guess I'm proposing, if we look at this, we look at it the building size first before we look at the rears, rear yard setback to see if we need to do the rear. I feel like the setback. If there was a lesser variance, maybe we can meet it.
Oh.
Yeah. But with even the, you know, if they were go to lesser size, then the maybe the setback doesn't need to be altered. This was my thought about that process, but open up more talk on working that through, I guess. But as I look through the second set of standards here on building size. It's really that first first comment for me about area and height relative to the size of the lot. In really the second the second standard about area and height as well relative to the principal building, principal building, because this is well over fifty percent of the principal buildings area at the principal building square footage is one thousand six fifty-seven. So we're talking nine hundred, right? On point three five acres.
I don't s- my personal opinion is I don't see how we can get a nine hundred square foot building going under these factors that we're supposed to read on this the way that this is configured, the size. So if it's nine hundred, I I don't see how I can get there.
I I can't get to nine hundred personally either with what I'm reading and trying to justify that amongst the standards we've got to look at. I mean, we've got, we've got five standards, as you probably have seen right in the packet you were given to try to justify and help help this along, you know, and
And we have staff report. Most staff is not here. We do have a written staff report addressing each of the factors individually indicating either one that the request is over the age of the size allowed and then goes through each of the factors indicating that at least two of them and snaps it.
Actually, there there are four. Four, four of them. Yeah. So three of the four, I think is what I'm finding to be troublesome. Does the applicant, do you mind coming up to the to the podium for us for a second, I guess? I mean, asking for a reduced size in this to help you along is gonna be a pretty big ask too, right? I mean, to help find us on a compromising set, you know?
I didn't know what was allowed. I mean, that was something that would be adequate to hold all my tools and welders and put my truck in there and the little barn that's here is one of them like eight by ten plastic sheds you get at Lowe's or whatever. So I got my lawnmower in there and like half a dozen rakes and that's full.
Yeah.
So that's a, I got everything out behind the back of the garage right now stacked up and I mean,
But you're willing to.
Willing to negotiate. I mean, if we can get the size or something because
We need something.
Yeah, meets up because we can't.
And when there's coming and
Yeah.
with his handicap, he needs to be able to.
Yeah. I mean, so if you just considered something to fit a vehicle in, right? I mean, you're talking about a, let's just say fifteen feet wide. It's not a lot of room on either side, right? I mean, if you're talking about a nine foot width or something like that and you're still talking twenty foot deep and that's just barely enough to I'm just talking about a three, let's just say three hundred square feet, you know, which is allowable. You're just getting your vehicle in there with a little bit of side room on each side and really twenty foot depth is just getting your vehicle in.
Yeah, because the place we lived in before the village I had a twelve by twenty-eight, one of them buildings they pre-built and then deliver and I could park my truck in there and put all the other stuff, but it's still my toolbox and workbench and stuff still went in the house garage.
It's not workable space.
Yeah, it's not with it. Something that small is not workable space.
Yeah. I think it's just a hard ask, you know, for the size of property we're we're talking about here, you know, and that the relationship between the two with land and built structures is tough ratio. Even what you talked about is like three hundred and forty square feet, it sounded like, you know, and that's forty extra square feet, which I I'm not, I'm not sure what any of us would be comfortable with. I guess, you know, I I don't know what a lesser square footage or a most, the most reduced size square footage would be that you would even say, oh, heck with it. I'm not even going to bother talking anymore. You know, if we were to say, yeah, three hundred and, you know, forty square feet is is the number. Is that something you want to pursue?
Probably not. Because, I mean, that's smaller than what I had at the last place because what's twelve by twenty-eight?
Yeah, that's a let's see. Tell you. There you go. Yeah, three thirty-six.
I mean, that was just enough to to put all my my welders and torches and yard equipment in there. And I think we had the kayaks in there too, right? Yeah.
Would you talk to staff prior to filing your application about what is allowed in the district and?
Yes. Yeah, she said it was only two hundred and ninety-six square feet and we already have that a little shed that's out there. And she said, we've already met or that you would have to tear down that shed if we built something else. That's why we are applying for this variance to build something bigger, not not necessarily the thirty by thirty. I mean, you know, we're asking for, you know, and if we have to downsize then so be it.
Do we do it twenty-four by twenty-four? I mean, maybe ten foot tall? That'd be what they're in. Four eighty?
It's five seventy-six.
Because I go any smaller than that.
You know, I, if you had your mindset on something already, if, you know, that's what I was just curious if you already thought, well, you know, Mika, I don't know what conversations you had with Mika, you know, to get here, but.
I did talk to Mika and she's the one that brought up about the twenty-five foot setback, which she says that's ridiculous. Because she said, I don't see why if you go one foot over and all of a sudden you got to move, you know, another fifteen foot out, which just about anything I build back here, if I do that, it's gonna be right in the middle of my backyard.
Yeah, no, that's understandable. I think, you know, I think we're, we've seen that kind of a hearing before many times about trying to help those conditions out with neighbors. I mean, we see it all the time with existing conditions where that setback is always compromised, you know? But with a smaller accessory building typically, you know, it's like a little shed or something that sits there. I mean, you're almost talking about an addition at this point. And I don't know what the allowable square footage for the primary residence really is, given the property size, if you were to consider that at all instead of a detached condition, you know?
But you're saying adding on to the garage I have. Yeah, we already talked about that.
You did. Yeah. It just, yeah.
We'd rather have it separate.
Separate. So it's, she's got to walk a little farther to find me, you know?
Yeah, right. Right. It's hard to get lost when it's dashed. I guess.
Well, I did. We did at the one house. She had her, man, we had over ten acres and she would rarely come out there. So, but I don't know. Is there some way you guys can like talk when you get the other people together and say, I mean, what's the max I could build on that piece? Probably at least to give me an idea.
Well, I mean, your max is two ninety-seven, right? For the ordinance, but it'd be what we would be in agreement on.
Yeah.
As to allow something that that's essentially allowing us to break the ordinance for you, you know, so and with that not being something that exists in the neighborhood. I mean, I hesitate a little bit. You know, to, I'm not saying this sets precedence, but I'm just saying it could be something that keeps getting referenced in the future for us too, that makes it a hardship, you know, for us at this very moment, right? To say, yeah, this is.
I mean, the ones we noted on our sheet there, I don't know what street that one is. He's got to have twelve, fourteen foot walls on that thing. And I mean, it it's, his house is a lot smaller than that barn.
So the height?
Williams. Oh, height and the size. He's just got the little, I would say it's about a eight, nine hundred square foot home and then it doesn't have an attached garage, but then it's got this monster. I don't know. I'd say it's probably fourteen, sixteen foot wide and at least thirty feet deep. With fourteen foot ceilings in there. I thought he was still on a fifth wheel in there, but he's just got all kinds of other stuff.
And that property, just to speak to that property appears that it was an acre. And because it has no attached garage, the ordinance treats it a little bit differently. So we can't really, it's not really apples to apples when we're working at this type of an application. It makes sense to say, no, this isn't the same neighborhood, but there are different ordinance standards that apply to that property. I I, because there are some existing accessory structures, including the one that the neighbor spoke about, just to bring that. I think it's a reasonable request, I think it's a free to seek an accessory building. I think it's a reasonable request to want to exceed the two ninety-six. But it falls somewhere between the two ninety-six and the nine hundred.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big, that's a big gap. I just wonder if it's a it's a bigger question maybe for you just to contemplate. Maybe we put this on hold even before trying to negotiate something here that you get disappointed in. I I don't want to say, yeah, here's your, you know, we can, we can do three hundred and forty square feet. And there's your variance. And then you're like, well, that's not gonna work.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work.
You know?
Rather than have us dictated to you, you want the opportunity to kind of go back and come up with a revised plan that we can take a look at.
That's kind of where I'm going with it is to have you counter. You know, with 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 something that might be a little bit more in line with what we're thinking is going to be more reasonable for you because I, we're just not going to get there. I don't think with the gap that we're talking with between two ninety-seven and nine hundred and picking something. I think I'd rather have you contemplate that, you know, for yourself a little bit more to see what is can be reconciled there.
And stop, if you're even going to think about it, we come back. Like I say, there's anyone come back next month and talk about this some more. Or we, we, we don't have to necessarily reapply, but we submit something an updated plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can table here on our end and it would just be on the next hearing.
Yeah. Okay.
At our, at our next meeting. You know, to come back. Sorry, I I just, I I think that we're just in a tough position right now to you know, really formulate a good response for you that is not gonna
Yeah.
turn into something good for you.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Denying. Yeah. And the honesty. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
We'll rework this and and come back.
Okay, all right. So I guess on our end do we, we don't need to, we don't need to process anything here at this moment. We'll just say that we're
Okay. Okay.
We got support. So that motion we carry and we can, we can see the next time.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You bet.
All right.
Okay. Let's move on to hearing number two. Hearing number two is a request by THGS LLC for a dimensional variance to reduce the size of the five approved parking spaces so that one complete handicap space without adjacent striping will fit on the site plan. The applicant is requesting that the spaces be varied from their approved configuration of nine feet wide to eight foot, eight inches wide. Said lands and premises are located at twenty-two fifty-six Iowa Beach Road, commonly known as the general store. So is the applicant here tonight? It looks like yes. If you could introduce yourself to us, sign in.
Sure. My name is Ken Dixon. I'm with Dixon Architects here. I serve as the architect on the project.
Hi, Ken.
Just a minute. Okay.
First off, I said on the zoning board of appeals for eight years native township and this this hearing that I I I know the pain you're going through. It's you want to help the, you know, you want to help the individual out as much, but you're you're kind of bound a little bit by the zoning ordinance. On both sides, they're they're doing a really great, good job of allowing you to to come back and kind of take it out. So thank you for your time. I know it's a good job. I did a pretty uh, tonight. So I, before you, we'll wait to be grand. The Ottawa Beach Resort, we're coming for a project. Just going, just isn't the word, it's falling apart, but we don't want to lose it. You don't really be creative, like just give us what we're looking down there. So, uh, was really the progress, um. Uh, which included an in cap stall. This is the actual non that was submitted.
Yeah.
And received approval for current.
Okay.
And you can see here's a one, two, three, four, five, six stalls with a five foot line. Uh, we got unloading. One thirty, that process, building and destruction. Final, or three other building inspected.
Hey, Pete.
And so we. Said a couple of words of ourselves. And, um, looked at the solution. During the whole process, we had the cotton in the major next door, which is a tree on our site. We wanted to do well during the process, we deserved it, those magnificent things all around it, beautiful, uh. Ready to go. So now we're at the point of, what we need to do is we need this to be fine. Uh, so trying to take out their blocks, we do one of the rare happens. Rare happens allows their change in style of the six. Uh, a lot of their business has not, that's just having universal drill, but in more urban areas or areas where. They're trying to be a little bit density, uh, grand and we've got a lot of, we're getting much of it, we'd say, so. Being a spin wheels is if we, if we're provided with my fellow, we're across. Um, everybody right here and looking at maybe the first, uh, four stalls, five stalls. Going to eight, four to eight, two, eight, four inches, the distance of the action.
Straight.
Straight, just moving over, uh, we did keep doing that, work it out and then get the two feet below you for.
Better question is, how, how are you removing all the paint? I've been faced with this before. We can talk later. Oh, yeah. No, like, I was just wondering. It just looks like a mess. It's not, it's too bad. It's unfortunate. Yeah, some, yeah. Okay, thanks, Ken. Appreciate, appreciate your introduction. Um, is there any, well, I'll open up to a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak for or against the hearing? I'll close the hearing and open it up for board discussion. Much discussion that we need to have. I, I, it, it seems to make a lot of sense personally to me. I, I don't know how everyone else feels here, but, um. I, I think the significance of the tree historically and, I mean. What it is for the community makes, makes a lot of sense to preserve the, the number, the quantity of spots. That have been approved. I think this is a pretty great solution. I don't think, you know, eight foot eight is. It, it is, I don't know if eight, what, what is the ordinance? Is it nine foot here? It is nine foot here, so. Yeah.
One of this.
Yes.
To help, um, so I, some of those, the, the striking is typically for a parking lot, uh, nine foot, which we do have to turn in. Uh, what we have going on here is we actually have a little bit of a community space, so it looks something long, what we started on. So a lot of times we try and hit that spot and turning while you're getting into the spot.
Right.
This one, you're twelve feet away, if you're coming from the years, some from there, that's definitely very much of the other, oncoming traffic, so. That eight foot H, the, this, this is really allowing you to hit that spot, because the need is of that lot side.
Yeah. No, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, gives you a lot of opportunity to make your corrections as you're heading in. I guess so, this one, we've got, um. Got standard thirty eight dash seventy. For review. It has four, four standards here? Yeah. Um, I think most of these make a lot of sense to me. I don't see a lot of hangups. Given the. Minimal correction that's relatively required here to make this thing all work, but.
In the six stalls, that was dictated by the planning commission, site plan review process, so.
Correct, yeah, we were approved as six, uh, they actually wanted more, but that's really all what can fit the site.
So if you had to lose a stall, obviously then you're out of compliance right there.
Correct. What I understand from Mika, if she was here, she did run it past the planning commission and they said, no, they would rather that there be more. Keep the stalls and lose the width, not that they have jurisdiction over that, but yes, they did indicate through Mika that they wanted the stalls.
I guess is that, is that minimum requirement that for your, your, your ADA barrier free? Lot or space to be ban accessible versus just a typical car accessible space?
Correct. When one stall is provided, it needs to be handicap, it needs to be banned accessible. If it was two, we could use the five and that, and they share kind of the loading space together unless they unload at the same time, but they, they figure that doesn't happen, so.
Yeah.
It's taken from a standard parking stall scenario with the engineer did originally and didn't compensate for the van, the van access.
Gotcha. So we're covering worst case scenario for the use of the space with a van.
Correct, yes, yes.
And a lot of times too, the numbers got special deal of activity.
Right, you got a percentage you gotta meet probably, right, with those provided spaces and we're doing that, so. Yeah.
And there is, one crazy idea we had, which does seem relevant, just within five hundred feet, there is the part, the, the, uh. Community parking lots, um.
True.
And that has a van accessible and we thought we should be address that and we keep it the same, saying that there's a van, but that just doesn't seem to. Feel right for handicaps, like being, being fair and then.
Right.
So we, we wanted to provide it outside.
Yep, no, it makes, makes sense.
And the bike parking doesn't interfere with the van accessibility? That's further west, right?
I love it.
Alright, um. I would like to make a motion to approve the variance request to reduce the width of the parking stalls. From ninety to eight, eight inches as set forth in the application. Finding that the standards in section thirty eight dash seventy. And that, um, first that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance and the building code. Is, uh. Well, I guess, let me just read this. Standard one, that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, regulating the minimum area, yards, setbacks, frontage height. Or density or other regulations would render informally with those instructions with the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdens. In this case, strict compliance with the zoning ordinance can the building code would prevent the business from following ADA guidelines. Uh, I would also add that strict compliance would also, um. If it resulted in the loss of either the tree preservation structure or the number of approved. Parking stalls on the site and then would also render them in non compliance with their approved site. Second, that granting the requested variance would use substantial justice to the applicant and to other properties in the zoning district. Um, given that this is an ADA requirement and that granting the variance would provide additional amenities to residents and guests. Um, that the standard has been met. Third, that the property owner or the applicant stood the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the zoning district. Um, here there's nothing in the records to indicate that this is a general condition of the zoning district. Um, the property is small and unique, um, and in comparison to the size of the structure we're looking at being the parking. Stalls, um, and also this variance is necessary to preserve the parking. Just facilitate, um, the ADA, the unique accessible spot and to maintain compliance with the site. Finally, the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. Um, and in this instance, staff's comments are that the building and grounds are already constructed. But the need for the ADA accessible parking spot is not self-created, but is a requirement of building codes and federal statutes. Um, the parking is not being eliminated, it's just a minor adjustment to the parking. And the applicant has demonstrated that the requested reduction is an acceptable width for a parking space. Um, and so I really just have comment that that standard has been met.
That sounds great, um. So we've got support, so the motion. Yep, so we take a roll call. And, uh. Can, can you do roll call for us?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So motion carries three O, so you've got your variance for that reduced parking space, so you're welcome.
Great job.
Thanks for, yeah, it really turned out beautiful. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, um. Next item on the agenda is public comment, so an opportunity for the public to address us. Um, if anybody has any appropriate comments. That would be welcome now, but. Hearing now, so we'll close public comment. In our next meeting, um, looks like we had three applications, so we're gonna have four. With, uh, the addition of tonight's, uh, tabled hearing number one, so. Everybody gonna be here? Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, we just, just talk to Mika about when we should have the materials submitted so that she can get those to us in advance of the.
We'll communicate, I'll communicate that to her, that this has been tabled just to make sure she knows it's coming too, so. Yep, perfect. Thanks, you guys. Yep. With that, or look for a motion to adjourn? Okay, perfect. Thanks, everybody.